All right, ladies and gentlemen, at this time I would like to call to order the City Council June Committees Meeting. At this time, well, let me precede this. Before we do the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, I would encourage us all to be mindful of our neighbors in Texas and the flooding and the loss of life and the uncertainty still that remains about some that haven't been located yet in all this. Can't imagine the, just the anxiety that folks are going through, through all that. So I would encourage us all to keep them in our prayers. Then after the invocation, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with us.
In your God and Jesus' name, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the City of Temple and the privilege we have as mayor and council to serve them. We pray for this meeting and the matters that have come to our attention and the information that's presented by the different departments. And I pray, dear God, you enable us to comprehend and to assess it and to use it appropriately. We pray for those in our community that are sick. We pray you'd give them healing. We pray for those that agree that you give them comfort. Pray for our friends in Texas and the flooding and the loss of life and the injuries. We pray that you just minister to those folks in the way that only you can. And we just thank you for the freedom we have today. Thank you for the celebration of the Independence Day last week. And Lord, and we thank you for maintaining that for us. We pray all this in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, next up is to approve the agenda for the June Committees Meeting.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda for the June Committees Meeting.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Miller, seconded by Ms. Bowles. All in favor, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. That will bring us to announcements. Ms. Jacobson?
I will give more details later, but we have gone into the Springbrook Transition. Finance and utility billing is live, but I'll give more details when I, for the City Council meeting.
Okay. I don't have any myself, so we will move now to the Finance and Administration Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Hiale Miller.
And, excuse me, if we can please make note that Mr. Bracknell has just called in and will be attending the meeting.
Okay. All right, welcome, Mr. Bracknell.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Miller.
Item number one, discussion on the monthly financials, RLGF reports, SPOS expenditure report for 2024, and the fiscal year '23 and '24 audits. Mr. Akins.
If you can speak in your mic.
Turn it, bring it down a little bit. There you go.
It's just a switch on top.
About that. So we don't have financials for this meeting, which the reason for that is we're going through the software transition right now. Believe we went live in June. So there's a period of time where you're running live on both of them, converting all the data. We've got the majority of the data fixed, but weren't quite to the point where we could get you a good set of financials just because you had the kind of a crossover between May and June right there. Our goal is to have updated financials on the next meeting. We should have the software fully converted by then or very close. So, yeah, we'll be back on track next month. But as far as the report of local government finances, I have '23 and '24 put together, ready for submission. So we've got those together. The SPOS expenditures were submitted to the county. And then we're deep in the '23 audit right now. When we spoke last week to Mr. Robinson, pending a couple of changes that we need to give him, we're looking at about a two-week turnaround on a draft of the financials. So I would say if we get a good draft, we should be on track to have something to look at, at the next Committees Meeting. That'd be for the '23 audit. As for the '24 audit, we, as we're waiting on those things to transpire and get finalized, we're already working on '24, so we're getting those schedules put together, closing those years completely. Have to do that anyway for the software transitions, that all this is kind of, you know, go hand in hand. But yeah, anybody who's been through a software transition knows that it's a process. Ms. Regina's working very hard. She's on the phone with him right now about a couple of issues. But we're definitely getting there. And then I think, you know, the next step probably, about to be budget season, so as soon as you close out one year, you're on to the next.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
So we're still filing for extensions on the audit every year, or when is the deadline on the extension, or is there one?
So we're already behind one year, so there's not an extension period on the next, as you're, you know, since we're already...
Okay, on '24 is it?
Right, right.
There's not one?
No. So...
Because of '23?
Right, because '23 is...
Okay, I got you.
Yeah. But, you know, I think, I think once we get this one done, the next one's going to be a lot quicker, just because I was more involved. Regina was, you know, had a better sense of what was going on, you know, with her role for the entirety of '24, so we're, it's a work in progress, but we're getting there.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, is it bill K request that when the financials that we don't have today are ready to be shared, that we just go ahead and email those out or send them to staff and they can email to the elected officials so we can go ahead and be digesting them even ahead of time?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Yeah, I can't give you an ETA on it, but we're probably a couple of weeks out on that, but sure, we'll go ahead and do that.
Anything else? Move to item number two, receive information on the meeting with Carroll County Board of Commissioners on, Commissioners on the continuation of the SPOS referendum. Ms. Jacobson?
Yes, so we, mayor and I went to the meeting with the Carroll County Board of Commissioners, with mayors of the other cities of Carroll County, and they discussed that they're working on the new IGA. Of course, this will be agreed upon by Carroll County and Carrollton, as they are the two largest populations. So what they agree upon is what we, we get to be a part of. And with that, they had given some information, and I did include that in your book, per population, of course, this is based off of the last census of 2020, but they had said that with zero percent growth, they, that our allocation is going to be, is that the right one? Yes, here it is. City of Temple, with the zero percent growth, that's part of the IGA, what they have to look at for the whole county. And if that's what they agree upon, then our allocation approximately would be $7,700,469.56. And she had said, you know, to wait for that agreement and that we would need to, she would get it to us and we would need to adopt it here in July because it has to go to the state. And we haven't gotten it because there are negotiations with Carrollton right now on that. I spoke with her. She did call me Thursday and said that she needed us to go ahead and send the projects list, which I have included here where I'm at this draft, if this is how you're wanting to look at it, to send to the county. Yes, yes, that draft, for the capital projects list for 2027. Then in the email, because she said it had to be there like August 5th, I believe, to the state, her email followed up and said we could maybe wait until the August meeting. I don't know. So if we can look at this and if we do come to an agreement, we could add it to tonight's agenda, amend that, that would be great.
Do we want to look at it now?
Yes, please.
So this is kind of like a blanket, too. They're not broken down, that's all we're sending?
Correct.
But we'll have an internal document for us?
Correct, so that we can look at what we would like, yes. So this is basically my calculations that I had given to you last month, I think. I was off by $143,000. I think I had anticipated $7.8 million that we would potentially could receive, so I had to adjust those numbers a little bit. But if you look at it, it is fairly in line as far as amounts with how we had said last time, but of course, we're getting more, $3,265,000 more.
And before you go along, why would we not be looking at the percentage growth increase? It's just always based on a zero percent growth.
So, so it's on our population, but they, they get to determine what they feel it's going to go over. So after, at 2027, they're not sure. And if they look at a higher percentage growth than that, then they're expecting more proceeds and we budget higher. So they're being conservative on their figures, doing it this way.
Okay. So we need to account for 7.7 million?
Correct, correct. Let me see here, what was I going to say with that? So looking at this with particularly Public Works Sewer Treatment Plant, these figures that with them, we're looking at, you know, obviously with Public Works, the sidewalks fall in there and we do need more funding to match upcoming sidewalks. Right now, we're only in the preliminary engineering phase. The, also, we have the infrastructure needed. Remember, two years ago, I believe it was, when we had gotten our list from Turnip Seed regarding the upgrades that we would need for water and sewer. So Public Works and Sewer Treatment Plant, we have included some of those projects with this amount. Community Development, Recreation, we know we've got constant upkeep of fields plus new things, senior centers needing some things. And I think that's all of them, Public Works, Public Safety. Yep, I've gotten a list from Chief as far as things in the next five years, what we're going to need.
So where is that list?
That was the list that I had given to you last month that we had looked at.
You got a copy right now?
I got a copy right now. I can hand to you, you can look at my thing here.
So that would be an atomized list based on these figures here, then?
Yes, so the county, we would give them a list like this. We would give them this list, but internally kind of for us to have strategic planning as far as what we're thinking, but it doesn't hold us down in case we ended up with an emergency water leak that we had to do some repair that we weren't expecting, or some kind of emergency, we're able to use those funds.
So we're not locked into the atomized list?
So this has, the price is a little different, obviously. I had just removed that extra $137,000 out of...
And that's one of those eight hundred?
Yes, yes. So that was the list there. No, we hadn't itemized it here, but I had asked, I'm sorry, they can't hear me. Can I use your microphone? So I had asked, it's not itemized specifically, but the directors had given me their wish list, which we had done, which was way in excess of what we had there. Because it's a wish list, we needed to kind of know what we're looking at for project-wise, what we're needing. And so there's just options there, but that's where then the council, of course, before you spend it, you go ahead and you can approve and look at that list. So that's the senior center one. And this was in last month's packet. And then we had the sewer plant.
And this would be what we just discussed last month, as far as, what was it that we specifically asked for that hasn't been on the SPOS? Do you all remember?
Sidewalks, wasn't it?
Well, sidewalks was one.
Oh, amphitheater?
Yes, yes.
So that could be, but that's, I mean, that's way even, an amphitheater is way more than what was even budgeted for. So that's why you could, you would have the option to maneuver and decide what projects you wanted to do or not do. But yeah, yeah.
Just for future reference, the next time we have something like this, I want this too, so I know what I'm voting on at the time and if it can change.
And even if I gave it to you a month before, he won it at the same time? Yep, yep.
Because you didn't tell me to bring it this month, so. Okay. Does anybody have anything else they want to add, or do we want to add this to the meeting? Or what are we doing with this now? Any questions, comments?
Well, if we don't do it tonight, we either got to have a call meeting or put it off until August, right? I guess we can amend the agenda when we get to that point, if that's what we want to do.
Okay. Anything else on it?
Nothing further.
Item number three, information on the preparations for Founder's Day, which will take place on Saturday, September 27th. Ms. Etheridge?
So we had our first Special Events Committee meeting, I guess about two or three weeks ago, so we're off to a good start. The first thing we wanted to do was start to get vendors for the event, so that was our main thing we've got going right now. We currently have 29 vendors and we're at a much earlier start than last year. Last year, we had over 80, so we're off to a really good start. And I really haven't pushed it much. I put it on Facebook, the website, and I did contact all of the vendors that we had last year, so we're doing pretty good. We have a meeting tomorrow at four o'clock, and our next steps, I think we're looking at the parade. We're going to finalize that so we can get our parade participants and also sponsors. So we're off to a great start. Everyone's helping out and it's been good so far, so we're excited. That's about it.
Okay, any questions or comments? Item number four, discussion on the Carroll County Water Authority, 5% increase on the water bill for the City of Temple. Mr. Walden and Ms. Jacobson?
Do you want to start with, you were part of the...
Well, I'll just briefly say that, yeah, back in May, the Carroll County Water Authority adopted their fiscal year budget, and of course, we have another increase. They increased our wholesale water by 5%, which is less than it was last year. Last year, it was 6% increase. The year before that, I think it was a 10% increase. So it is coming down, but it's still an increase. And that will go into effect, and we have no choice on that but to pay it. That'll go into effect with the December billing.
And so with that, I wanted to see if we could look at adopting that August 4th meeting as we're looking at budget preparations and stuff, since that's for the December billing.
I'm sorry, adopt the what, the August what?
On August 4th, the next meeting.
Oh, gotcha, I'm sorry.
Include that on that agenda.
So you're going to adopt what?
Wanting to discuss the, see what you're wanting to do, if you're wanting to discuss rates as far as 5% or...
August will be another combination committees in the afternoon, so we can discuss it as much as necessary during the Committees Meeting.
That's about it, not much to say.
Water's going up.
Okay. Item number five, receive information on the quotes for the roof replacement at City Hall. Ms. Jacobson?
Yes, so that is on the capital budget for this year. We've known that that needed to be replaced, we had been told. And therefore, Randall went and he's worked with some companies to give quotes. You will see that he has included a quote from Findlay Roofing in the amount of $45,375. There is one from Ben Hill Renovations in the amount of $48,250. And then Atlanta Roofing had given us a quote and said that they had to, they were quickly putting it together, but he was going on the high side. And we said, well, you need to give us what you will give us and get the lowest quote to us. And he was able to get that quote to us, because it was, I was trying to get the information for the book for you. So Atlanta Roofing had, gave us a quote for $49,517.60. I did speak with Randall as he went through these quotes, and he had highlighted some things. Now, he does not recommend going with the $45,001. There's a concern with the installing the rolled roof. We do not have that right now, and he doesn't want it. The way they were doing it, they weren't going to replace it, I believe. They were just going to put back what was there, and he said, no, we don't want to do that. And they said, that's how we do things. So we don't, he, Randall says, he's not interested in that quote. He said the next two that we got were good, but he recommends Atlanta Roofing in the amount There are a lot of things in this that he prefers. So for instance, no air guns will be used for the installation of shingles. They have, they perform a 40-point inspection upon completion. There's a GAF Golden Pledge warranty, don't ask me what that means. He just highlighted these for me. He said the warranty not only offers lifetime coverage on the roofing system, but it provides a full 25 years of coverage on any workmanship defects. In his past, with, with contracting and doing general contracting, building services, he has worked with them and they have come through when there have been issues wonderfully for clients. So he did say that he would recommend that one.
That's Atlanta Roofing?
Yes, for $49,000.
That's different than what, this says $52,000.
So we got in, we got the new quote. That was the one that had given us a quote, and we're just, we're quickly getting it for the book.
So the new one is...
It is $49,517.60.
And that is already on the agenda for tonight?
And that is on the agenda for tonight. But we will need to specify the company and the amount.
And it's the capital budget and what, the funding source was SPOS?
Yes, the funding source is SPOS.
Any other questions or comments? For item number five?
Which is one thing that will need to be an amendment to the 2025 capital budget, because I think we had budgeted $30,000, but we do have that in that SPOS funds for City Hall, so we can incorporate that.
It together, amend the capital budget and/or that will be later, a later date to amend the capital budget?
We have to do an amendment to the budget, because it's, we had, she's wanting if we can do both tonight at the meeting, just amend that or, do you have a preference? Okay, let's go ahead and amend. So we'll have to add a number 10.
I didn't see anything in Atlanta Roofing quote that said architectural shingles, which is what we've got on there now. And the other one, Ben Hill, he, they mentioned architectural shingles. So, you know, when we...
Is that what the ARS, or no? Okay.
Okay, if you look at Ben Hill, they got Lifetime Pinnacle Scotch Guard Architectural Shingles. And I don't, I don't know if this Atlanta Roofing, if they're going to use architectural or if they're going to use the three-tab shingles. And the GAF Timberline, HDZ, that could very well be architectural, but I'm not sure. I guess we could put that in the, in the motion, when we make a motion.
Because Ben Hill uses the, doesn't use a air gun, which is, yeah, which we want the air gun, too.
But we want to be sure that we get architectural shingles. They're better than three-tab. There's nothing at all in their quote that says that.
Any other questions or comments? Moving on to items six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, I'll read them individually. Monthly Paid Invoices Report. Anyone have any discussion around it? Carroll County Water Authority Monthly Report. Any discussion? Monthly Report by Financial Accountant Ms. Shaw? Or Monthly Report by City Clerk Ms. Etheridge? Do you want to give us an update? Any questions surrounding, or, okay? And Monthly Report by City Administrator, Administrator Ms. Jacobson? Anything you want to ask?
I do want to add that we had received an amicus brief from the City of Milton. If you'll recall, a while back, somebody had struck a planter in the right-of-way off the side of the road and sued the City of Milton, or they're in the middle of suing the City of Milton, that this amicus brief, the mayor has, is asking cities across Georgia to adopt, to opt in to this amicus brief in their appeal pending before the Georgia Supreme Court. Currently, the, the amount is $35 million against the City of Milton, and this was established in their right-of-way, not in the road. And of course, as you know, with legislation this year, they're trying to pass where there is a cap on how much a city can be sued when they are not negligent. It wasn't a planter left in the middle of the road, two foot away, which would be different than just making their streets look good and on the side. So therefore, they're asking if we would opt in. I did speak with Legal on this, and he did say that there are multiple cities of his that are joining this, asking, because this is, with the, for the appeal pending in the Georgia Supreme Court. So that is why this is before you. Mayor had received this and asking for your consideration to add that.
And we need a motion to add it to the agenda, or it is already?
We will need a motion to add that, that it is. And I do have that on that sheet that has agenda amendments in case you're, in case you desire. Because I thought it would be easier for the wording...
That's perfect, yes.
What it, okay. So the ones that I was asking, except for the amending the capital budget for the roofing lineup, and the other ones are all on there.
Got it. One quick question on this resolution. Is it a resolution to appeal the decision or a resolution for a cap on the amount?
So legislation's already working on the cap. So legislation's already working on the cap on the amount. This is to, this is participate in the amicus brief. This is an appeal pending before the Georgia Supreme Court. But do you, can you give further, Mr. Attorney, information on that, please?
Okay. Yeah, an amicus brief, amicus means friend of the court. And it's just a, it's a procedure where a city in this case can let the court know that they support either the plaintiff or the defendant in a particular case. And in this case, it would be the City of Milton, and by signing this resolution, we are just letting the Supreme Court know that we support Milton's position and think it's the correct one. And we want you to know that we, along with all of these other cities in the state of Georgia, think that you should rule in favor of Milton, is really all it is. But it means friend of the court. And, and it'll just go in the court file, and will be read by the justices before the, before the oral arguments and before they issue their opinion.
Any questions or comment? Okay, that will conclude Finance and Admin Committee.
All right, thank you. Next is Community Development Committee, chaired by Mayor Pro Tem Richard Brynall, Vice Chair Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller?
Item number one, information from the city's engineer, Mr. Ashworth. Turnip seed engineers on the impact of nature development within the city of Temple.
So I think the, the main reason I was asked to come and, and to speak tonight is just to, to give an overview of, of some things to think about when considering the different options for zoning within the within the city. And in a lot of ways, you guys are probably more involved, more connected with it than I am. But was just asked to speak from, from my experience on the different advantages of different zoning types. And in particular, light industrial versus residential, and how that affects the city, whether a property is zoned, either one of those. So the, it really boils down to a preference for the city council. There, there's not necessarily a right answer. It's it's, it's based on what do you want the character of the city to be? So some cities want to be almost exclusively or entirely residential. And, and then there's cities and city planners that will argue for a mixture of residential, commercial, industrial, and, and want to have that, want to have the, both the mix of jobs and residents in the, within the community. Other cities prefer to be what's termed as a bedroom community, where you're, you just have residences, and then people go other places to, to work. So some of the advantages, if you do zone a property commercial or light industrial, is you're diversifying the tax revenue. And both commercial and light industrial tend to tax your your schools, your water system, less. And, and sometimes that can be the case with roads as well. And a lot of times, a, a property that is zoned light industrial can have higher tax revenue to the city than, than residential will have. That's not always the case, but a lot of one of the reasons that a lot of communities try to create that mix is for that reason, is you get the tax revenue without the, the burden on the schools and the water system, and on the roads. It, it also, it creates jobs when you, that are here in the city. So that can attract people to come, live in the city if they know that they can, they can work here. I know that there, i- if, if the property is on a, a state highway, then some of the, the burden for upkeep of roads can be less, because the GDOT is responsible for keeping up those roads. And then with any of that, I think there are restrictions that you already have in place in your ordinances on buffers between dissimilar uses. But then also, if there's a particular property that you're looking at, you can create special conditions for that property to, to change zoning. And even have a, I'm trying to remember what it's called, but essentially a revert back clause. If it's not developed within a certain amount of time, it reverts back to its previous zoning. And some of the other things that you may want to consider as you're thinking about is traffic studies, just making sure that if a property is being rezoned to either commercial or industrial of requiring that the developer make sure that there's not going to be a negative impact on the roads. Maybe special hours, making sure that the work is not, especially if it's near a residential area, that the hours are, are not going to be affecting residents in the area, the hours that the business is operating. And then extending the, the vegetative buffer between, or on the edge of the property, so that it creates more of a, a buffer between other properties. But I think that's that's the gist of what I would give as the, the overview for converting a property either to commercial or, or light industrial. So are there any questions?
I wanted to know about the water and sewer, as far as the difference between the two. Because that's a major consideration and something that we're working on.
Yeah, so if it's something like a warehouse, it tends to have less water use for the same size area than a residential of that same size area. But that's not always the case. And you can put caps on what that property, how much water capacity they will be allocated, so that, to make sure that it's not a, a heavy water or sewer user that moves into that property.
But we wouldn't look at putting a cap on the water capacity base before zoning, right?
You can, I, I mean, city attorney, if you want to speak to it, but I think that you can make it a condition of the zoning, of, is that we can only allocate this much water to it.
And I think that's where that's, that could be in the motion where
The developer to bear the burden, the cost burden of water and sewer upgrades.
Yeah, they would bear that.
Imagine that would also define the classification, say, between light industrial and industrial and commercial is the water usage for each of those designations.
Heavy industrial, yeah.
Yes. I've always been told that on a rezoning, that you couldn't, if it wasn't used within twelve months, twenty-four months, or whatever, it could not automatically revert back.
Okay.
Can we get an opinion from the attorney on that?
Is there?
My thought is that would need to be a condition to the, to the change in zoning.
That if something isn't done, that it reverts back?
In X amount of time, yes.
And of course, that would be if you're, if you would prefer a zoning over another. Now, if you're wanting, you know, more industry to come in, you'd want to keep it. Or if you want it to be more residential, you'd want to keep it and not zone it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Item number two, presentation of information on the proposed construction project of the city-owned building located at 598 Sage Street for multi-use to house the museum and community development department. Ms. McKinley and Ms. Walker.
And I think there isn't anything new, as far as we did receive the attorney saying that it was okay to house multiple departments within the museum. And so I guess the request is to go ahead and authorize the RFP, because you're not committing to anything anyway. It's just to get that RFP out there and kind of see what funds we're looking at.
Any questions or comments? Item number three, report on the June Planning Commission meeting, with a request by Billy Jack Bell with ISG Incorporated for a rezoning of parcel T-020060219 on West Seventy-Eight Highway, Land Lot 179, District Six, from single-family detached residential R1 to light industrial to be considered at the 6:30 PM city council meeting tonight. Ms. Walker?
The first item that was presented was for parcel splits, which council is to take no action on, so that one's fine. The other is Billy Jack Bell presented to the Planning Commission to rezone the eighty-three. Three point five acres from, on Highway Seventy-Eight, from residential R1 to light industrial. The future land use map does state that the parcel, the future land use is residential. However, this property is on Highway Seventy-Eight, and it is just to the outskirts of the city of Temple, right on the end before you go into Harrellston County. I believe you guys should have a presentation of what he is presenting. Lisa, did you want?
Conceptual layout.
Yeah, conceptual layout. Did you want to speak on the Planning Commission's decision? Because I think there was quite a bit of back and forth.
Yes. So the, I think I had even put it in the motion for the meeting. Let's see here. There was a motion and a second to approve the rezoning, followed by not in favor. There were three of them. So it was a motion with a second to approve, and then three opposed, and no additional motion was made after that. So.
I guess we can open it up now, or are you finished?
Yes, I'm finished. I believe Billy Jack.
No, yet, no, the hearing is later. This is just the committee's meeting, unless the council says differently.
Unless y'all have questions for him.
Can we address some of what Turnip Seed just brought up? Like, I know, we did address the water and sewer upgrades, but also the vegetation buffer. It was extended past standard anyway, right? Remind me of what we did on that buffer?
What is our buffer? Is it a hundred?
Our buffer is a hundred-foot buffer.
And what is it in this conceptual?
It is a hundred-foot.
Okay, but he, I thought he was doing something additional on this.
He discussed putting in landscaping to help with the differentiation between residential and industrial. Also, we discussed that none of the development would have deliveries that come around the back that would, you know, butt up to the residential property. So any trucks that would come in and out would come in and out on the front side of those buildings. So it would be less disturbance to the residential properties behind them.
And the lower lighting and a taller fence, what, all these things?
We did discuss a fence. Probably would, that would be better for sound. And also, the light, no lighting would be directed towards the residential. It would all be directed towards the building. So it won't be like you go on your back porch, and there's this bright light shining at you. It's the same requirements that we were going to have for Bruins Road.
I had also requested something in terms of equipment machinery not be on the resident-facing side of the property.
Yes, that, and if, in the concept plan, it does say that. There's no driveway that goes behind those buildings.
Not driveway. I'm talking about machinery, such as A/C equipment, or compressors, any kind of thing that might kick on automatically and causing noise.
Okay, that will have to be discussed during construction plans. This is just the concept plan, but.
We do have something with no excessive noise. Do you want to develop it deeper on that?
Yeah, I think we need to, I mean, I'd hate to be laying in bed at 3:00 AM, an industrial compressor kicks on.
Okay.
I would, I would contribute this comment, though. We live in a town where we have a railroad that goes right through. And it, it, it does not honor the sleep, sleeping habits of anybody. So.
That is true.
So I'm, I'm not sure which one wins out on the noise decibel meter.
That is true. It's my understanding that the Planning Commission did not have this concept plan at the meeting.
No, they did not.
So we're, we're seeing something that they, they've never seen.
Correct.
Did they have pictures, pictures of drawings of buildings or anything to look at?
There were quite a few buildings that were examples of developments that he's developed in the past.
I know this particular piece of property has come up at least twice in the past for residential, but they always wanted to do something higher density than what we would allow.
Very high density.
So they either, they either withdrew the rezoning application, or we rejected what they wanted to do. So I don't know that anybody's going to go in there and do any R1, which is what is zoned, which is more like their lots.
Right.
Seems to me like it would be more, make more sense to do something like this. It would be probably more tax revenue.
That's what I was going to say. It's more tax revenue with less impact on our infrastructure.
As, as far as the roads, it's
DOT's responsibility.
From there to Interstate Twenty. One issue I would have would be the intersection right out here being any eighteen-wheelers coming from that area going toward I-20. A real tight turn out there. Going south on 113. Because, you know, we have problems now, especially if I-20 backs up and they have to come from Raymond out this way. It's a problem. Sometimes they get backed up, and especially if the turning lanes are, are full out there and have, you know, got cars in them. But other than that, you know, the DOT would pretty much have to handle all the roads.
Right.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay. Then four, five, and six, monthly report from Code Enforcement Officer J.R. Prince, monthly report from Construction Development Inspector Randall Bias, and monthly report by Community Development Director Deidre Walker. Any additions or comments? And that will conclude Community Development.
Thank you. Next is Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Casey Russel, Mr. Russel, and Vice Chair, Mr. Brynall.
All right, item number one, update on the Public Works Building Project. Mr. Josh Smith?
Finally, he's drying out enough to be able to do some work, but they're going to, got the foundation. The footing, the footing's poured and the rough plumbing done, and start pouring the slab towards the end of this week.
Any questions? All right, item number two, information on the Sage Street East Johnson Waterline Project. Josh Smith?
Got to get with Turnip Seed, with Heath and Greg, and schedule a final walkthrough. Got to get with Turnip Seed, with Heath and Greg, and schedule a final walkthrough, or not a final walkthrough, but schedule a corrective list walkthrough with, with them and the contractor. I spoke with the contractor last week and Heath was on vacation last week, so getting with him this week and we'll be scheduling that soon to, to go through and address all the issues that need to be remedied, so.
All right. Item three, update on the Williams Mill Creek Interceptor Project, Josh Smith.
The walkthrough was done on that and they were given items that need to be completed, so they're, you know, they're, got plans to work on that. And those, mainly is going to be removing silt fence, some cleanup, some grassing, got a tree at a property we need to take down and some things like that, so, so that's where we are with that. The actual infrastructure's done on it, so.
Item four, status update on the water loss, Josh Smith.
We're just still looking into, you know, the different options. Now that we've got that, uh, this line actually up and running from the Sage Street, East Johnson Waterline Project, we've started receiving some quotes on some meters, you know, to, to start putting in. There is one, one, Greg still here, one area of work that we basically told the current contractor on the waterline project that we were just going to hold off on that because we weren't quite satisfied with their work and this was going to be an area that was going to be some pretty extensive, uh, work needing to be done to tie in right there at, what is that, Carrollton and James, or Carroll Avenue and Carrollton Street. There's a, uh, tie-in that we need to do, so we're going to go back. Greg and I have talked about, um, you know, taking some, putting some plans together with what needs to be done there to be performed, to do that tie-in and go back and cap off and abandon the old lines. We can't, we can't abandon those old lines until we do that tie-in right there, so that's going to be coming up here soon, so. We've got the money and the budget still on that waterline replacement project to be able to do that, so.
And to clarify, these water meters are not part of our automated water meters for the city residents. This is for our ability to monitor how much water's flowing through our system zoned.
Right.
So that we can help isolate where there might be leaks or excessive use.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted that clarified when we say water meters. All right, item five, update on meetings held by staff with surrounding governments and water authorities on potential water supply and retention. Lisa Jacobson and Josh Smith.
We don't really have anything new to present just yet, but I wanted to keep this on the agenda so that you know that we are continuing to have meetings and get information so that we will have information to present to you as quickly as possible. So, we have had, do we have, was it one meeting since last month or two?
One.
One.
With Carrollton County and Paulding.
Yes, yep, the two counties together, so. We'll be coming to you with more info.
I got a question. What happened with the agreement that the Carroll County Water Authority sent us several months ago? They wanted us to sign an agreement limiting the water coming from the rainy road feed. And I think we, we just didn't do anything with that. We didn't respond, is that what happened, Greg?
That's where it's at.
We didn't respond?
Well, we met with them. That was the meeting, you know, we went and met with, with Matt, I believe you were there. And then after that meeting, we talked internally and, you know, it was recommended at the time that we didn't, you know, sign that.
Yeah. Well, they have, they have never told us that we, they couldn't supply us with more water, but we, we have, I don't think we've given them a figure, have we? Greg? Of how much we may need?
Can you come to the mic? It's the only way it goes through the system.
It was discussed at that meeting and the initial, um, response that we received from Carroll County made it seem that they preferred not to increase. They weren't saying a hard no, but it, it did make it seem like they didn't know if they would be able to and if so, if how much they would be able to supply.
Those were when the conversations began to come up about if they were to increase water supply, because we did talk some numbers, you know, future needs and things such as that, where they had began to talk about what we would need to do as far as either doing a tank. Then we, you know, of course, began to talk about the wells and all the different things. That's kind of what led us to the, you know, uh, point that we're at now where we're, you know, discussing other options. So, we also didn't get a, you know, definitive answer from them. The answer that we were kind of left with, you know, that seemed to have been, we can supply more if the city will build this or this or this.
Yeah, put in a water tower or a tank?
Tank, yeah.
And I think the reason it was recommended to not sign the new agreement was it was only restricting Temple's use, the city of Temple wasn't getting any benefit from the change in contract.
Right, I understand that, okay. Okay, so right now, we're just kind of in limbo with the, with the water authority. Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, moving on to item six, receive information on repairs to the generator that need, needed to be completed at the wastewater plant. Jimmy Jenkins.
Oh, yeah, so, um, we had, we needed to repair, to be made for the automatic voltage regulator, which that basically keeps the voltage in a certain range so that it doesn't harm sensitive equipment. If you get like a surge or something like that from the motor, that repair has been made, but now they need, they found that the automatic transfer switch is faulty and of course, the automatic transfer switch is what causes it to kick on automatically whenever the power goes out. And so, we're in the process of getting that repaired and we have that money in the, in the operating budget.
All right, no questions? All right, the number seven and eight, seven is the wastewater plant superintendent, or monthly report by Jimmy, and then we have the monthly report by Josh. Any questions for those monthly reports?
Reminder, the monthly reports are under Finance and Administration, under the, all the reports are under Finance and Administration altogether. We had talked last month about them being separated and using multiple pieces of paper, so they're there, but please look under the Finance and Administration tab.
Understood. Anything to add by Jimmy or Josh? All right, that concludes Public Works.
All right, thank you. Next is our Recreation, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Howard, please.
Yes, sir.
I didn't get it, I didn't get it in in time. He was talking about that the Water Authority has not restricted the amount of water we can purchase. Is that what I understood?
What I said was they have not told us that they would not supply us with more water.
Okay, so why did we do the, why did we do the moratorium?
They're charging us, uh, they're charging a premium on rainy road for, you know, they're supplying us a certain amount. They're already charging us a premium for that tie-in and then if we go over that amount, it's an additional, uh, charges taxed on, tagged on to that. And they were, with the newest proposal they had sent, they wanted to limit that portion of rainy road to a point we just weren't comfortable with. And then if we went over that allotted amount that, that they want to supply us there, the premium goes up even more.
So, is rainy road our only supply?
No, rainy road's not our only supply, but you, we can't, we can't restrict, we can't, we don't have enough infrastructure to turn down rainy road and turn up other areas because rainy road is one of the feeds that, that only feeds, you know, feeds certain parts of the city. And we're already at the, for the most part, we're already at or, or exceed sometimes the amount that they're comfortable with, with giving us on rainy road.
So, so it wasn't, it, the Water Authority did not restrict us, but it was the cost they caused us to put the moratorium on?
When, when they say restrict, that doesn't mean they're not going to give us water. What that means is they're going to restrict the contracted amount they're willing to supply us, to promise us. And we can't guarantee over that amount to other, you know, to other entities who want to come in and, and develop. We can't, uh, we can't overpromise what they've promised us because they can at a certain time, you know, say that, you know, we, we can't supply you more than this or that's it. It's not necessarily they're just going to cut us off when we hit that amount. It's just them telling us, this is all we can supply you, all we're comfortable with supplying you. And we knowing that there were future developments in that area that would be operating off of that feed, decided that, that we're already at that threshold now without those developments being, being put into place, so we can't promise water to those developments at the current state that we're in.
But that means then that, that development would only be affected on that side of the tracks, correct?
Uh, yes and no, because, I mean, you know, there, of course, I mean, when you think about the way the water comes into the city, whoever's closest to that feed is going to primarily be getting their water from those feeds. But, you know, our system ties in to one another. So, if you have an issue, you know, if, say if you were to have an issue at Center Point or something and you were needing to get more water from rainy road and you had to shut Center Points down or for just whatever reason, they were having a, a problem at Carroll County with the Center Point feed, then the rainy road feed, you know, would, would push further, you know, so you would be increasing that volume and that flow around the city. Right now, it's distributed equally enough with all the different tie-ins that we have that, you know, that, that you're probably not seeing a whole lot of the rainy road feed feeding, you know, um, certain areas. But, but that's the, you know, I mean, you, you can't guarantee the math on that, but yeah, I mean, for the most part, it is that area. But, that since the system is, is, you know, one completed system, you know, that's supplied on every end by Carroll County, you don't want to overpromise, you know, on that side and, and then possibly have a need, you know, somewhere else in the city that that side would originally come from.
I got you. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, that completes Public Works. We go to Recreation Committee chaired by Councilwoman Alexis Bowles and Vice Chair, Councilwoman Casey Russel. Ms. Bowles.
Thank you, Mayor. Receive update, updated report on A, the repairs to the football score stand, B, repairs to the concession buildings, and C, repairs to the electrical and sports lighting on the sports fields.
Yes. So, at this time, I don't have anything additional to report regarding the repairs on the football score stand. We're, I've compiled a report that I'll get over to Kristen and then we'll follow up with that. A and B both are under, will both be sent to the, the insurance company to see what we can do after that. C, repairs to electrical and sports lighting on the fields. Have an appointment with the contractor that knows sports lighting inside and out, so he'll be coming out and assess what's going on with the lights at this time, so.
Okay, number two, July is National Parks and Recreation Month and the following events are being hosted at the Recreation Department to celebrate with our community. A, Family Fourth on the third, July 3rd, last week, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. B, Talk the Walk, July 10th, 5:30 to 8:30 PM. C, Poppin' Sickles in the Park, July 17th, 5:30 through 8:30 PM. D, Park it and sip lemonade social, July 24th, 5:30 to 8:30 PM. E, Paddle Palooza Pickleball Social, July 31st, 5:30. You have a lot going.
We do have a lot going. We really wanted to jump in and celebrate the National Parks and Recreation Month because it's just important to get our, our community and our citizens to the park and stay active. Hiring our program coordinator is one of the, I just think was a great step and we're seeing a lot of, a lot more people, different people come to the park because of what we're offering. The Family Fourth on the third was a huge success and I am grateful for Ms. Kathleen and Ms. Shanika who stepped up to the plate and Councilwoman Bowles for coming over and serving. I was cooking, I think I cooked maybe about 300 hamburgers and we had about 200 hot dogs and we served our community well. They had a lot of fun. There's some things we're going to work on for next year to make it even better, but it was an absolutely great event and I love the collaboration with our, with our sister senior center over there that took care of business, so I really appreciate that. So, and then we have a new, a new event coming up this Thursday, as you can see, every Thursday. It's going to be something different every week and we've been getting very positive feedback online regarding these events.
With that, I had someone to approach me about swimwear for the kids when they were, I don't know if it was on the flyers or not, but they requested that it be known.
To add that to the flyer, let them know?
Yeah, it seems like they have babies and they want to put them in their regular diapers on that, so.
Oh, okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Item number three, the annual Jam in the Park event, Healing with Heroes, will be hosted in conjunction with the Optimist Club on Saturday, August 16th at the Temple Recreation Department.
Yeah, so we are gearing up for this huge event. Last year, I think we had in between four and 500 people that came through and we're looking for an even bigger event. We've gotten very positive, good, you know, feedback on that as well, so it's, it's just going to be a great event and we're changing it to Healing with Heroes and you're going to see capes all over the place and we're expecting our, our, our police officers and public servants just to come in and to, to work with our kids. We're having counselors that will be on board and really trying to get the schools involved as well and try to help them to tackle some of the issues that they have at their level.
Ms. Bowles. On the subject of the Jam in the Park, I'd like to contribute that it has already been approved by Optimus International Foundation to receive a grant to help fund this event as it has every year that it's occurred.
Thank you.
Also, the First Lady Donna Johnson is the president of the Optimus Club here in Temple and she put together a collage of photographs and put them on a display board and we were able to attend the Optimus International Convention last week in St. Louis and they had a table which she displayed those photos along with information about our Jam in the Park so that others could see what's going on here, so just wanted y'all to know that.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Number four, this, receive, quote was followed by discussion on potential upgrades to the Power Pavilion Playground at the Recreation Department.
Right. So, you guys have those in your hands right now and I do want to apologize, some of the quotes I had to send back and for them to rework it and bring it back. So, I, I received the last quote today at about 3:00 o'clock, so that's what you have in your hand. You have listed one, two, and three, just for my preference, what I think will work best for the city of Temple. And you can, the, the, mm, mm, the budget we were working with was $70,000, which was approved. And so, Game Time has come in at 68 to 72 with their playground structure, which is personally my favorite. I think we'll get more bang for our buck with that. You can see it does have a shade, yes, it has a shade with it. The second estimate that you should have in your hand is with Corecat and we've done business with them before and they've been great. business with them before and they've been great. Um, and their estimate came in right at 71, 671, 52 and it is this, uh, I think you guys have the red unit, yes, the playground structure. You have it, Mr. Walden?
Oh, I'm looking for the total on it. You said it's 71?
Yeah, it's not total.
On the back, is it not double sided? No, I'm sorry. You didn't get the other side. Sorry, mine was double sided. It is 71.
Okay, so the total is what?
71, 672, 52.
71, 672, 52.
Yes, sir. Sorry about that.
What was the cents?
52.
52 cents.
Mm-hmm. 71, 671, 52. Okay. And the third came from Playworks. I'll hold that up. And those definitely are double sided, so you should be able to see the totals on that. It came in at 73, 539.
73 or 75?
I can't hear you if you're addressing me. No?
But your, your preference was number one, you said, right?
Y- yes, sir. It is. My preference is that.
What do we do with the equipment that's there now? Do we trade it in? Do we, do they haul it off or do we sell it?
They haul it off. They haul it off because they have to dig it up and haul it off. If there's no damage, we can retain it. Um, I don't think that I left this with you guys, but how it works, it has the whole project. And that's the discount that you guys see on Game Time where you see the, uh, the unit itself is 30, 70,000, so we got 50% off of that unit. So we're getting a bigger unit because we're, uh, using their 50% off on retired, your old playground structure.
So that's this?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yep, yep, yep. And they, I should have included this, but if you look at the details, as I'm going to read them, customers must submit their projects by May 31st. They've extended that for us and orders must be placed by June 30th. Playground replacement offer only applies to eligible play systems, which they've included. Um, so they'll just take out the old and replace the new.
And that is a Sloss project?
Yes, sir.
Ingrid, it says valid till June 30th, though. Are we still okay?
We're okay. We've extended, they, yeah, they knew we were coming and we want to meet that deadline. Yeah.
So revision two replaces revision one?
Yes, I sent, I sent it back and said, hey, this, we were getting structures for 125, 216,000, so that's why it's revision two for that one. Yeah.
So Game Times, Game Times revision, what is the total amount?
68, 272, 96.
72, 96.
And I can bring you a copy as well. I can in two minutes.
Any other questions? Okay, number five, report on sock hop dance that took place at the Senior Center on June 27th by Ms. Shanika.
So our sock hop, it was our first annual sock hop at the Senior Center. Um, it was a great turnout. Uh, we had about 100 attendees to come, featuring four volunteers, six staff members, um, and 10 sponsors and with each sponsor, they usually, um, had someone with them. So that was food and admission that we were able to see, um, excluding the sponsors. Um, it was a lot higher than expected, excuse me, than what we were expecting for our first annual hop, um, sock hop, though we got great feedback. Everyone is encouraging us, of course, to continue to do it. The only feedback that we got was the event time, meaning they want an extended time and then hopefully maybe, uh, maybe more in the daytime because we do have some elderly, elderly people that don't like to travel, but it was a great feedback for the time in which we did do it. Uh, what was it? We had raffles for our sponsors. Again, we had over 10, so that was good. Uh, one of the biggest takeaways that I wanted to also bring up, um, outside of the sock hop, because it was a great, um, opportunity, thank you for all of our help and our staff that put it together for us, but the membership and our range and our age, we have seen a significant shift in that, meaning from like 50 to 64 years of age. So with that, it's going to promote and bring so much more activities and events for that younger, um, generation with the elderly. And then also, um, I just wanted to point out, I think on the report, it shows that we had 10 new members. Out of that, eight of those were in that 50 to 64 age range, which also, sorry, for us to revisit the card services because a lot of the members are coming in and because they have those credit card services, they want us to be able to take that as a form of payment.
Uh, just a question. I know some of those kids that were there, just curious, did they, did they behave themselves well?
Oh, my gosh. I will say they behaved themselves very well. They enjoyed it. I don't know if you guys have seen the pictures of our kids enjoying themselves, but thanks to Amy Photography, she sponsored and actually took all the photos, actually, um, hand-delivered the prints as well, so our seniors, they, it was great. They enjoyed it, I'm telling you. They, they got down.
Sure they did.
And that card system, what, can you refresh memory what that's?
Yes, so it was a software that we originally spoke about. It was more so of a whole system to keep our memberships, uh, to keep count of our mail tracking, our inventory. Um, I definitely would like to revisit that because we are, as we continue to grow and have the different need with the diverse of the age groups, we want to be able to hone in on exactly who we're serving, how often we're serving them, and a more efficient way to do it.
All right. Um, is there anything else for them? There's number six, monthly report by Recreation Director, Ms. Ingrid, and number seven, Senior Center Monthly Report by Ms. Shanika and Mrs. Kathleen. Nothing for them and that concludes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, ladies. Next is Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilwoman Howard Walden, Vice Chair, Councilwoman Alexis Bowles. Mr. Walden?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I see the chief is on his way up. How do you do, chief?
All right, good evening, everybody.
So first of all, we're going to receive an update on the generator purchase for the Police Department. Chief Lee?
Uh, yes, I got a quote sent to Lisa. I actually asked a company that I found out once I was getting the lines put in and had to tank them stall, that they do generators as well. And when he gave me a quote on it and some reference on it, it was several thousand dollars cheaper than what I had. That's because they do it all together versus me paying that other company and then coming back and separate to put the lines in and the tanks in.
Right. Okay, so you want to go with, well, that is coming up in the meeting.
Glossing.
Yeah, okay, so you want to go with that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else you need to add to that?
No.
That is, it looked like we got all the info on that. And that'll come up in the regular meeting?
Correct, yes.
Uh, there's no questions on that. We'll go on to item number two, report on speed limit devices for Old Bremen Road. Chief Lee and Josh Smith.
We, uh, chief and I have been looking at this and, um, looking at different devices and stuff and, uh, one of my vendors has a device that I mentioned before, it's the, um, the speed, uh, detection, um, signs, uh, but they also do, um, detection as well as far as like counting, um, traffic and speed and, and all that kind of stuff. Um, it is solar powered, um, it's got 12-inch displays, um, it's got a 1,200-foot radar range, uh, so, you know, that's really, really good on, on those type of roads. Um, and then it comes with a traffic data software, um, and all that kind of stuff and basically everything you need to put it up. Uh, and I had to take the tax off of here, she said, she couldn't do it on the quote, but, um, the total price for a device like that, uh, come out to be $3,958. Um, Lisa had spoke with some, uh, people down at the GMA Conference that sell similar ones and, and I called them and just, I didn't get any, uh, hard reports from them or anything but, um, and, and got prices and, um, they are coming in around that same 4,000 to, um, some, some were up, up closer to 6,000, you know, so, um, so that looks like that's kind of the, the price range in that, so, um, that's something, you know, we'd like to do that, that's within our spending, uh, uh, we just, you know, get together on some budget things and look at purchasing one. One thing about it, I mean, this, um, this can be permanently fixed or it can be fixed, so, um, you can, um, since it's solar powered, you can move it, you know, so if you want to use it, uh, you know, here for a while to, uh, to, um, try to combat, uh, you know, some speeding, but at the same time, um, get that software, uh, you know, detection and, and the accounting and all that kind of stuff on how many vehicles, you know, are traveling up and down the road, how many vehicles are speeding versus how many people are, you know, um, doing the speed limit, you know, that allows us to kind of determine, okay, we've got, you know, this percentage of speeders and I'd have to go and look at, at how the math is done, but, um, you know, there's a certain thresholds, like the state and stuff uses if they're receiving, you know, this percentage of speeders on a road, then they'll start adjusting, uh, speed limits or speed detection devices. If it's below a certain threshold, you know, there's, uh, it's recommended, you know, that not much will be done other than enforcement. I know chief had, um, his deputies out there for several weeks and I'd let him speak at that, but I think him and I talked and he said, they're not, they're not seeing a lot.
Not a lot at all. I was out there myself and what we tried to do was hide and watch and look and you get a few hidden there and by the time we can't stop them then, you know, they're sitting there directly because of the mark cars, the police cars that go sit down. But you probably get, you know, I know you're seeing them all, but it's not like they're coming every five minutes or nothing. Now, we probably sit out there a good hour, 30 minutes, I only see four. That's above, I mean, you're going to give people that 10 miles if it's 35, 45, you're talking about at least 50, 60, you might catch four. So, you've got give and take, some days are different, so. We can at least get a total of the number on it and you'll know what we need for when you go from there.
Well, that, that device sounds impressive for the money, but does it do anything to help with people running the stop sign up there? No?
No, nothing helps with that.
Only thing is officer presence.
Y'all are still?
Yeah, we sit there.
On the scene, son?
Yeah, but I mean, still, most people see that car, they're going to go head and stop.
Oh, they've been out. Yeah. I've had to be a little more careful myself.
You better be.
Well, there's a few, I mean, I always, I don't, you know, that roll-through will get you too, you know, you think you, you didn't come to complete, yeah, California stuff, yeah, so.
Now, is any, any questions or anything on the, uh, on the speed limit device for the chief or for Josh? So you're going to go ahead and purchase that?
I think so. I'll get with chief and Lisa and, um, you know, we'll look at some budget stuff, see how we want to do that, maybe we can split it up somehow, you know, departmental. Um, ideally, I would recommend, you know, at some time having two of them, you know, maybe we won't do that right off, um, because it'd be good to have them in both directions, you know, um, so, uh, so we're getting that data in both directions, so. Because you've, you've probably got more, if, the speeders that you're going to encounter on most roads are going to be, like on Old Bremen, it's going to be coming from like Webster Lake because, you know, the majority of that's downhill, you know, so people are going to get up, uh, to speed a little.
In the other direction, just as soon as they leave that second stop sign at the, uh, at the school, they're full throttle.
Right.
Because they get that curve and I mean, there's some days, I, I don't even know if they're going, I can't believe they slow down and make a turn.
Yeah.
Chief, have y'all written any citations on the, uh, running the stop sign there at Webster Lake?
Yes, sir.
You have?
We have.
Maybe that'll help. Maybe that'll help some.
Like I said, uh, it's amazing the people that you write can live right here.
Yeah.
It does seem to have, uh, saw with somebody living in that same subdivision on that street.
Yeah.
They just feel like, I guess in their mind, they don't have to stop or there ain't no cars coming anyway. That's what most people say, well, ain't no traffic that this way, you know.
So it's okay to run it?
Yeah.
In their mind?
No cars are coming this way, so I'm just going to stop.
Last, like last three weeks, that's, I don't hear as much out here.
Yeah, we write, we've written through a few, certain people, yeah, we know the speed and a lot, land drag and all that, but it's just hard too when you've got 200-plus streets in the city, we'll try to be, take eight officers or 10 officers and put them in all these subdivisions. It's, and then by the time you get set up, something else happens, you gotta go head and then the person, I ain't see nobody in my neighborhood.
All right, is any questions, uh, from anybody, from the chief or Josh on that? If not, we will go on to item number three, monthly report by Police Chief Craig Lee. Y'all have that in your, you want to add to it, chief?
On the stats, anything, just the highlights, uh, a few days we missed out because we cut it off on the 18th of June, so we'll get all these in the council books, so it's going to be some other stuff to happen in June on next month.
All right, any questions on the report?
Everything's going pretty good right now.
Good.
Uh, at least my working with me, uh, I got the walls coming in, um, stage, everything's already here, so.
We're talking, we're talking about municipal court coming in here. Can you give them the date? Can you give them the date?
It's the 6th, August the 1st, 1st, uh, 4th, 8th, August.
Okay.
Y'all picked up a new vehicle today, too.
Oh, yeah.
While you're here, I do want to commend you, chief, and, uh, your officers and your staff on the Jean Jones funeral procession.
Well, well, as I heard.
I had some, uh, I had some good comments on that from the family. Uh, and they made a point to say that it was very, y'all were very professional, very respectful. And I think that just, that sheds a good light on the city as a whole. Yeah, we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Anything else from anybody? If not, Mr. Mayor, that will, I'm sorry, go again.
Yes, chief, did you want to speak to the vehicles?
Oh, the new vehicles?
No, the vehicles that you're wanting.
Oh, I'm sorry. He just hit me with vehicles in the area. Yeah, uh, I got five, was it five? Five vehicles that, that we've been, I mean, I talked with the enterprise lady that we deal with and about seven of the vehicles, uh, three of them, three of them are drug and the other two might be city, I, I'm not sure it's either or. And she said they don't want to bother with them because they're not really running vehicles or nothing like that. I just got to give them stripped down, take our equipment and stuff off and then she said, go ahead and sell them. And what's, belongs to the city, what the city purchased goes back to the city. And whenever we did, our seizure of drugs goes back to the federal account, so I'll give y'all a listen to those vehicles once we get them up and going.
So we would like to add that to the agenda if you would like. That was the number eight add I had requested, just to authorize the sale of those five vehicles on GovDeals.
One, one more thing, have, uh, has Sophie been active any at all?
Yes, uh, actually active and, uh, Villarica used her. For some reason they got, got to a bind, wanted extra K9s out, something happened in Villarica and, and also we just assisted Harrison County and, uh, Harrison County this weekend. The borough is here, it's been great on the term. Drug, we hadn't yet gotten a lot of drug the rest of life we normally get, even marijuana and everybody going around their box because they know that dog, they know he's stopping cars, so that's the good thing.
Yeah, they're going around the city with it.
Yeah, going around, we're not getting anything.
That's good. Okay, uh, if that's it, that will conclude the Public Safety portion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen. Uh, next is Personnel Committee chaired by Mayor Pro-Tim Richard Braden, Vice Chair Howard Walden. Mr. Walden?
Oh, okay. Let's meet tonight, okay. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Item number one, monthly report from Human Resource Specialist Vicki Nichols, and that should be in your packet. I guess if you have any questions on that, you can ask Lisa or Ms. Nichols.
And reminder, this report does go through June 23rd, um, so we did have, um, a couple vacancies that will be on the next report.
Okay, we had two of them, right? Resigned?
Yes.
Okay, uh, if there's no questions for Lisa on that, that will conclude the Personnel Committee.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, next, any closing comments?
I do want to say that the, uh, the flags look real good, that the public I do wanna say that the, the flags looked real good that Public Works put out in front of City Hall and all throughout the city. They did a good, good job.
Yes, sir. All right, we do need, we have time, we can go ahead and have an executive session for legal, and we will dismiss, with your permission, we'll dismiss to the conference room up front. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let me know on the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign, motion carries, and of course, no action in this meeting anyway, we'll come back and adjourn, and at 6:30, we will begin.
Do we need anything?
I don't think so.
With us.